Welcome everyone to the Kent City Council Workshop. Today is Tuesday, October 20th, 2020. This is a remote meeting due to the COVID-19 health and safety requirements put in place by the governor. I would like to welcome anyone joining us today through Kent TV 21, the Facebook City of Kent channel and the YouTube Kent TV 21 channel. Also, anyone that has called in to listen this afternoon. It looks like we have everyone here to get started. So we have one item on our workshop today. We will continue the 2021-2022 Binyo Budget Conversation, and I would like to welcome Paula Pinter to get us started. Thank you, Paula.
Madam President, we got Councilman Finch on the phone. You want to test to make sure you can hear her and she can hear us, please?
Yep, Councilmember Finch, are you there?
Hello, hello.
Hi, Brenda, I can hear you. Are you able to hear the meeting?
Yeah.
Okay, wonderful.
So thank you.
Not a problem. Glad you're here with us. We are going to go ahead and get started.
Okay, thank you.
Paula, you can take it over. Welcome.
Thank you very much. I do apologize. I was having some technical difficulties, so hopefully everyone can hear me now.
You sound great.
All right, wonderful. Well, we tonight are going to continue walking through some of the questions that have been posed by members of city council. So I first off want to thank you for having me here tonight, and let's go ahead and get started. So Michelle, next slide, please. All right, so question number 20 was, please explain all increases over 5%. And this is referring to page 28 of the book, looking at the general fund increases. And so when you look at for administration, we're looking at the 2020 budget to 2021 budget, and you'll notice that there is an increase of 44.3%. And this is what makes this up. Looking at salaries and benefits, if you look to the right side of your screen, you're going to see salaries and benefits. The increase in that is 14.6%. That is made up of a position that was moved from HR for $71,000. And there's a COVID position reduction of $65,000. Also included in that is that equity manager position at $168,000, and then some one-time shifts. And so that is totaling that $236,000 increase you're seeing for salaries and benefits. For supplies, supplies has an increase from 59,000 to 146,000. Part of this has to do with the restoration of some one-time cuts. So if you recall, when we did our COVID reductions, there were some of the department reductions that were one-time, and those were restored back into the budget. In addition, there are supplies for the equity manager. We do have a 2% increase that you would typically see. And then we have something that we call net zero changes at $52,000. If you look over at services on the little box at the lower left-hand side of your screen, you can see it's reducing services by 52,000. So they just shifted what line item it was in their budget. They have not increased or reduced their budget at all. They're just reallocated it to a more appropriate line item. In addition, there is an increase in 2020 allocations. So you'll see that the 2020 allocation did increase, reducing the expense by $27,000. Again, those allocations are what gets charged out to other funds in the city. This is done for administration, finance, HR, legal, within the general fund. When you look at the services column, you'll see the increase of $563,000. Again, this is restoring $52,000 in the one-time cuts for COVID. So again, we did reduce some of the expenditures during 2020 that we were not going to spend, but that was just for a one-time reduction, and that was returned. In addition, there'd be services for an equity consultant of $50,000. And then we've talked an awful lot about the IT allocation and how we have changed how we're allocating out the funds from IT to be more for departments that are specifically using different types of equipment for those service charges. So that's what you're seeing there are the IT allocations, the multimedia allocation and print shop. Another thing to be mindful of when you're looking at the multimedia and print shop allocations. We've talked about these allocations and the fact that they are looking back two years. So what you're seeing here for 2020 is actually looking at actuals from 2018. So we are now accounting for those charges from 2018 into the 2020 budget. And actually, it would be 20, excuse me, 2019, because we're looking at the 2021 increase in those. So the, in addition to services, there's 2% increases, which is our standard increase, as well as some other internal service charges. Again, those are those cost allocations, things that come from, whether it's... We did pull out IT separately because that seems to be a bigger hit, but there's other internal service charges that go out as well related to that.
So any questions about this slide? I saw Councilmember Larmor put her hand down. So Councilmember, voice your mic as often. Do you have a question?
Yes, I just want to reiterate, when we look at the supplies, if I'm not mistaken, I think a bulk of that came from Parks Director Julie, who pushed money off to the side for one year, and I think she recovered that. Would that be an accurate statement, Paula?
It would be real similar to what the Parks Department did. This is actually an administration, and they too, because we were looking to be able to have some one-time cuts from all of the departments, people did reduce their budgets for that one time, and it's $7,500 is the one-time cut for the admin department.
What parts of the bulk of that supply is cut? I'm thinking of something else.
They did a very similar thing, but their numbers aren't on here since this is strictly administration.
Gotcha.
Yeah, not a problem.
Councilmember Larmor, did your question get answered?
It did, yes.
Wonderful. Thank you. Councilmember Cor.
Thank you, Paula. That reduction, is that the neighborhood coordinator position?
The reduction, the COVID position reduction?
Yes.
That is the portion that is char... that one's Patrick, excuse me, Patrick's position, because he was funded full year, or not full year, part of a year in 2020, and it did go away fully in 2021.
So we have Patrick's position, and then we used to have Pam's position, but I think that was eliminated. So neighborhood position is still there, but it seems to be that we're using it as communications coordinator at this time.
Yeah, yes, that is true. That function is being handled by another member within administration.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, any other questions about this particular side of administration? Okay.
All right, so court is another one. Again, we're looking strictly at the general fund, where they had increases going more than 5% when you look at the 21 budget compared to the 2020 budget. And that is made up of the fact of a couple of different things. First off, it's during the budget reductions, the court was, during the COVID, during COVID, the court was closed for a while, so they were able to recognize some one-time savings in salaries and benefits at $120,000. So then, since that was strictly related to 2020, that those one-time cuts again were returned back. They also had one-time cuts in supplies and services that you can see for $11,067,000. Again, that was the result of the fact that the court wasn't open for a period of time. In addition, we have our standard salaries and benefit increases of $31,000. Those have to do with COLAs and step increases and changes in any benefit rates. And then finally, our 2% increases in supplies and services, as well as the IT allocation. Do you guys have any questions about this?
No hands up, Paula. Oh, stop, Councilmember Cor.
Thank you. Sorry about that. Actually, I'm still stuck on the previous slide. You said that position cut was Patrick, but Patrick was retiring, so we didn't really have COVID savings in administration?
Actually, we did. He did choose to retire at the time we were doing the budget reductions. So he did, we did have salary savings in 2020, and then his, we did have some amount of savings in 2020. However, we did recognize the full amount of his savings in 2021.
Okay, thank you.
The position when he did leave, that was not refilled and that was reduced.
Okay, I think that was part of the plan as addressed in previous budget cycle, but that's another question. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Madam Mayor, did you want to make a comment?
Oh, I think... Yeah, thank you, Council President. So yes, to clarify, Patrick chose to retire early in order to save another job. So it was absolutely COVID savings. He would not have retired probably until the end of next year. So there was savings recognized there, and then Pam's position was a part of our budget cuts in the previous budget. So there have been two positions cut, two administrative assistant, executive assistant positions cut in the mayor's office.
All right, thank you, Madam Mayor. Any comments or questions for Paula on this slide pertaining to the courts? Okay, Paula, I do not see any hands raised.
All right, finance was another one of the departments that had an increase of over 5%. What you're going to find is that is made up of salary and benefit increases of $14,000. There was a reduction in office supplies of $1,000. What that is, is I believe Councilmember Larmor had asked about that. No, it was Councilmember, Michelle had asked about it related to what is central stores? Central stores is an internal service fund, and what we do is we look back at three-year trending of how much money are you spending on office supplies? And we tend to adjust that, and in this case, it did end up in a reduction to our department, which is fine because we weren't spending that. So that would make sense. In addition, the IT has an allocation, increased our budget by $67,000. And then another thing that increased our budget is a decrease in the amount that we were able to allocate out. So when you look at 2019, what we're allocating, or excuse me, when we're looking at 2021, we're actually allocating out our actuals related to 2019, and that was $85,000 less. So we were not able to allocate those out because again of that two-year lag. And then finally, we have our 2% increase in supplies and services.
All right, any questions for Paula on the finance page? All right, Paula, you can keep going.
All right. So question number 64. It says on page four, I see the capital resources will have a $13.3 million fund balance, which is $2.3 million above previous biennium fund sources, fund balance. So this, this question is a little bit tricky. For the most part, I will say, yes, there are restrictions on how the capital resources fund balance can be spent. However, that being said, you will notice that when we start looking at what our revenue streams are going into the capital resources fund, you're going to see that they come from various sources, from sales tax, utility tax, real estate excise tax, transfers from the general fund, and that's mostly related to BNO tax, and then some other miscellaneous taxes, or excuse me, miscellaneous revenues. Several of those revenue streams do have restrictions that have been imposed on them. Whether those restrictions were imposed internally, meaning as a city of Kent, we have imposed them upon ourselves based on an ordinance that has been passed, or they have outside restrictions, for example, the real estate excise tax. The RCW does define how we can use those dollars, so it's really important to be mindful of that. We, when we, when we start doing this, it's a matter of what revenue have we spent first? What revenue is sitting in fund balance? But for the most part, a lot of the money that is in there is based on what our ordinances or the RCW has said for us on how we spend those dollars. Sales tax is one of those where we do allocate to our capital resources fund a portion of our sales tax, which is about 20% of our sales tax goes into the capital resources fund. And that would really make sense when you start looking at what is the makeup of our sales tax revenue? And part of our sales tax revenue that we get in has to do with one-time activities such as construction. So, and we do receive in a good amount of money that is from construction. It's great to be able to earmark it for our continued use in construction in that, in that capital realm, because it is, we do want to use one-time dollars for one-time uses, because that is the prudent thing to do. We also have a requirement based on our policies to keep a minimum fund balance of $1.5 million into the capital resources fund. And then if you start looking back to, of the history of that capital resource fund, when we did go through the Great Recession, we saw the funding for our, for our capital just dwindling, and the balance in that capital resource fund dwindling. And so it's important to keep in mind that we want to make sure that we're able to continue to, to maintain our infrastructure and those, those things that we, our capital resources that we have in conjunction to keep, keep our ongoing operations going.
Councilmember, voice your, have your hand raised?
Yes, thank you, Paula. I think Councilmember Larmor and I, I think we had some conversation around this particular item. So I think the BNO is pretty much written in the ordinance, and you mentioned the REIT. However, I think the other ones, right now, we are where we are, but there are policies in place, right? If you want to take extra cities off one of those and put it somewhere else, and I think that can be done, right? Paula?
Yes, that can be done, depending on which revenue stream you're looking at. REIT is one of those we cannot do that with because there are outside restrictions, but some of the other by ordinance, if it's approved by council, can redistribute some of those revenue streams.
And I think Councilmember Larmor, that was your question that you was getting at, right?
Right, yes.
Okay, all right, thank you.
All right, do we have any other questions about this particular slide? All right, we can move on.
All right, next one, please. So the youth teen fund, question number 65, there are there programmatic restrictions on the youth teen fund? How have these funds been spent in the past, and how are they planned to be spent in this biennium? Well, I just wanted to take a minute to just talk a little bit about the youth teen fund. We spoke about this, I think, a couple of weeks ago, too, so I might be repeating myself, and I apologize if I am. But ultimately, the youth teen fund is, I look at it really as a repository. We have an ordinance that has established that we're going to spend a certain portion of our utility tax to support youth teen programs. And the, when we set up programs like that, or when we, when we put restrictions on ourselves like that, we need a way to prove to the auditors and to anyone else who wants to look at it that we're really doing what we say we're intending to do. So this youth teen fund itself is really a place for us to put in, in compliance with the ordinance that we have in place, a portion of our utility tax dollars that will be used for youth teen activities. Then what ends up happening is, at the end of every year, we transfer into the general fund... an amount that we have spent on youth teen programs. And so that way, we're able to show that we're using those youth teen dollars for their intended purposes. And I, I believe Julie is in the audience and can speak a little bit more about how these funds are spent and what their plan is for the biennium. Julie?
Yep. Hi. Good evening, Council President and Councilmembers. Good to see you. In this particular case, we, we don't really change a lot on what's funded in this bucket. This particular bucket supports the staffing and program materials for Kent's, that's our free summer meals program and playground program in the summer. That's our out-of-school and summer day camps and overnight camps. That's our after-school, elementary school programming, middle school, high school, late night, the Kent Teen Center. We also have a lot of generalized youth enrichment programs and events and so on. The other amount of source that, services that comes out of this particular bucket of funding is the recreation scholarship program. So this is where we actually pull a chunk of funding to help fee assistance for our community and programs as well. So in this particular case, it's just a funding source for us. What is not necessarily spent with this allocation are youth athletics or youth support when it comes to adaptive recreation. Does that help? I mean, I'd be happy to answer any questions beyond that.
All right, Councilmember Thomas, you have your hand raised.
Thank you, Madam President. Julie, have we ever maxed out that account?
Yes, we max it out every year and actually spend more because the utility tax stays constant. It doesn't inflate with growth.
Right.
So every time inflation comes, general fund absorbs a little bit more and a little bit more every year. So we max it out completely because we spend way more on youth and teen than what this utility tax provides. But it's a support we definitely rely on.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Any other questions for Julie about this?
Awesome, thank you.
Thanks, Julie. That's really helpful.
All right. So question number 92. What is the difference between capital and operating expenses as far as where the money comes from? How do we know or decide what IT gets for dollars for operating versus dollars for capital? Okay, so IT has two buckets. Obviously, we have our capital bucket. We have our operating bucket. So there are some revenue streams that go into each of those buckets based on ordinances that we have established in-house. About 18% of our, of our operating revenue in the IT fund comes from our cable utility tax. And that is restricted to go to that IT fund based on an ordinance that we have. In addition, we have technology fees that also, that makes up about 6.3% of the revenue in the IT operating fund. And it is designated by ordinance and we even have one through resolution that requires that the technology fee be used towards IT operating. The IT internal contributions, those are those cost allocations that we're talking about. IT is an internal service fund, which means they primarily serve the city of Kent as an organization. So we need to pay them for their services. Somehow, they have to recoup their charges. That's what that internal, IT internal contributions are, as well as the GIS internal contributions. There's two different elements that go on there in that fund. Those are, all the funds pay in for the services that are provided for that. Then we do have some miscellaneous revenues that go in there. These would be things like interest income, potential outside revenue that comes in. I believe the RFA is still paying in to IT just a little bit. So those are all things in the internal contributions, those would have to be used for operating because that's really what they're established to be used, is to be able to support the operations of the IT depart, the IT support. Then we have our capital side of the house. The capital side, we, our utility or our utility tax ordinance does call for a portion of that to be used towards hardware and software lifecycle for capital. That seems to be about $1.6 million per year. The other items that go to capital, really it varies from year to year. And those, those variances, they are things that will typically come from, for one, another department. So, so if there's a big project that's going on and maybe it is one that IT is supporting that has utilities that they're supporting. So for example, if they're having to do a new utility billing system, so all the various utilities will have to pay into that. That could be a fund, funding source. Another very common funding source is our capital resources fund from the general capital area, not the parks capital because there's specific parks restrictions on that. But the general capital of the capital resources fund, and really that varies year to year depending on how much funding is available for capital and what the capital needs are. Any questions on that?
All right, Paula, I don't see any hands raised.
All right, next slide, please. Okay, so on this slide, these are four questions that we had slated on the questions log to be discussed here today at the council meeting. However, an email was sent out earlier and it included answers to these four questions. So I just wanted to make sure that everyone did feel like their questions were answered related to the, in these areas before we move on. And I would be happy to read these really quickly. Question 23, page 31, I'm very, I very much support the Human Services Opportunity Fund, but would like to see this funding significantly increased, especially knowing that we have yet to see the worst of the human need coming from COVID impacts on local workers and family. I would also like to see, see this fund seed some new innovative thinking around homeless response in our downtown core according to the business, businesses and residents. Things are not getting better. It's time to try and fund something new. Question 69. Does other funding sources include grants? What are campus park improvements for $100,000 in 2022? Lastly, what's the difference between the park lifecycle, parks planning operation and parks plan? Question 96, regarding the funds going to community groups, I believe some needs to go to BIPOC communities for obvious reasons. There, sorry, my, my eyes. There are other underrepresented communities too, such as those with special needs, those with lower socioeconomic levels and others. We need to assure some of this will go to BIPOC communities. What is the best way to do that? And then finally, if the council were to add funds for the proposed Human Services Opportunity Fund, would Kent human service agencies have organizational capacity to use it? So I know that Julie did a fantastic job writing some information up and able to get that all sent out to you guys. So thank you very much, Julie, for that.
All right. So Councilmember Larmour, Fincher, and Michaud, do any of you have further questions about these? If so, go ahead and raise your hand. All right, Paula, I think you did a great job getting through those questions for everyone. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. All right. In addition to questions, we've also had some proposals that council has brought forth and, and have recommended for this upcoming budget cycle. So we kind of, let's go and go to the next slide, Michelle, please. What we, oh. Let's see, I thought that we had a different one, but we will do it this way. So proposal number five, so we had a couple of proposals that came to, oh. Oh, this, let's start with this one here. The funding of police-related data collection. So we had a couple of proposals that came forth, one from Councilmember Core and one from Councilmember Boyce. Councilmember Core had proposed that we fund data and responder positions versus the cars per officer program. And then Councilmember Boyce has recommended the use of $50,000 of fund balance, this would be general fund fund balance, to hire a consultant to evaluate best practices on police-related data, including technology platforms, data points, data collection and public accessibility, and to make recommendations to council in early 2021. If the legislature does not fund a data collection system, then the council will make adjustments during the biennial budget process. So, and then with this related to the, the police-related data collection, there was actually a question that was raised as well. And I thought it would be really appropriate to maybe discuss these couple of proposals that came forward in conjunction with question number 95. In that, what is the total cost for everything needed? This would include the person, the licensing, hardware, applications, maintenance, et cetera, to have the, to have data. And is there a reason we could not collaborate with other cities to build a system and to decrease the cost per city? And so I thought that I would just kind of throw these out and provide an opportunity for some discussion. Council, Council President Troutner, if you wanted to help lead that, that would be fantastic.
Thank you so much, Paula. I see Councilmember Larmour, you have your hand raised. But I think what we'll start off with is, right now, we've got these two proposals in front of us. And I would like to give the person who brought those forward a chance to speak on those. And then we can go to additional questions or comments. So Councilmember Core, did you want to speak on behalf of your proposal and request?
Yeah, and Paula, that's what I wanted to get some time to talk to you about. What this would look like if we were to do that? Because I feel like at this point, funding data analysis and actually working on the correspondent model is very important for our community and for us and our officers. So I think, you know, so I would be interested in learning on how we can fund that instead of maybe reducing the number of cars per officer, but looking at a way to, you know, fund it from our budget. I know we're looking at legislation, but we don't know what to expect and we don't know when it's going to happen. And we really don't have the time to sit and wait on them to do anything. So that is the reasoning behind my proposal.
Thank you, Councilmember Core. Councilmember Boyce, would you like to speak on behalf of your proposal?
Uh, yes, thank you, Madam President. You know, I think at the end of the day, there are lots of data out there, right? And I think when you talk about comparing apples and apples, I think it makes sense to make sure we are comparing apples to apples, right? I strongly believe there's a sense of urgency, but also I believe there's a sense of making sure we do it right. So if we were to go out and collect a bunch of data today and have no one to compare it to, like a lot of your business and corporations, they compare data in order to figure out how they're going to go forward. I, I think will be possible wasting time and wasting money, right? I strongly believe, you know, that, you know, the best way to handle this year is to hire a consultant that will reach out to multiple agencies, that will, will reach out to the community or where it's BIPOC or whatever, to get the type of information that we are looking for to make sure we collect the data. It says early 2021, right, to be able to get that data. And if the legislator don't do it today, then there is a clause in my proposal that we will make an adjustment down to biennial budget. So I personally, I mean, I don't really support reducing vehicles to do this year. I think, you know, this year is a, is probably the most appropriate way to go and make sure we're going to do it right. We only got one time to get this right. And I want to make sure we are gathering data and comparing apples and apples. So that's where I'm at.
Thank you for that, Councilmember Boyce. I'm going to now turn to some of my colleagues that have their hands up. Councilmember Larmour.
Thank you, Council President. Yeah, so, you know, we've had lots of conversations to speak about this. And I, I want to support the proposal by Councilmember Boyce. I think bringing in a consultant is smart, not only for the reasons we listed here, but found out this week that the Tiburon system, the IT system for the police department that is reaching the end of the lifecycle that needs to be replaced, will have data reporting capabilities. So I see this as, as a nice segue between, we can use the results of the consultant to build our business requirements for that new system. So I think it's a smart move and it's a good investment of money for the consultant because it could easily, that information and knowledge we would gather would transfer into the building that new platform anyway. So I support this and I appreciate Councilmember Boyce for bringing this idea forward and bringing a solution forward.
Thank you, Councilmember Larmour. Councilmember Fincher?
Thank you, Council President. 95 came from me. So I was with IT yesterday, actually with Councilmember Larimer and IT, and found out that it's not simply a person, it's a, a team. The city already has basically a team that has been collaborating as far as IT and the integration amongst the different departments that we have. And so I would support Councilmember Boyce's suggestion. As long as we can have something at the end, by the time we do the biennial adjustment that says if the city does not act, then we need to step up and act. I mean, I'm sorry, if the state does not act, we need to step up and act. So, you know, we know that there's lots of proposals going forth, so hopefully we really will get some funding. But we need to do something and have something in our pocket in case they don't. And I, you know, heard the, the thought that it's good not to put it in the budget because that would give the state a reason not to do it. It's like they have it in their budget now. So I agree with not having it in the budget now, but that we definitely need to do something by the biennial budget in case the state does not act. And on the part about collecting data, I think we can start collecting data in early 2021. We know that Tiburon is being replaced and there's going to be data that can be collected and integrated into that. We know some of the data points that we're going to want to have anyway. There may be others once everyone gets together, but I think there's some basic ones that we're starting, that we can start collecting. And for that data to be able to put in, because we need an abundance of data anyway to start being able to measure. You know, we have to be able to build the data that we have for it to be able to be reliable data. So we can't have just one or two. We're going to need thousands of entries to be able to come up and see clear pictures. So I don't think that that is too soon to at least start collecting data, even though that would probably have to be done in a manual form. And the chief and I had talked about that. There was a suggestion that I had from another agency, what they're using. It's old school, just paper and pencil, but something to have that, that data ready for when the system is ready, which is anticipated to be 2022.
Councilmember Fincher, I just want to comment real quick, Madam Chair. Strongly agree with you, Councilmember Fincher. And you're right, we do have some of this data here. I'm hoping that consulting, you know, once we get this budget passed, it will come on right away. We do have some data that we know is valuable. And then I, I promise you, I will lead the charge of this biennial budget if the legislator don't do anything to make sure we will get it taken care of.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Fincher. Councilmember Michelle?
Thank you, Council President. I agree with my fellow council members. Having this police data has been really important to me for several months. They've been asking for it. And so I do support Councilmember Boyce's proposal here. And I think we need that, that person to, just to be able to answer question number 95. And then also, I think it's important to remember that we're almost done buying the police cars. After this budget, we should have. After this budget, we should have pretty much enough. Of course, we'll need to buy one or two here and there. But, so that would also open up some money in the future for that data collection as well.
Thank you, Councilmember Michelle. Councilmember Thomas.
Are you sure? Thank you, Madam Chairman. One thing Bill said is so true. We are the watchdogs over our own budget. And so it's very important, like Bill says, he'll be the lead point, and I know he'll follow through on that. So I feel very comfortable in his proposal here, number five. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Councilmember Thomas. So it looks like, I'm just kind of keeping track and making some notes here on where we are. We have the two proposals in front of us, and this is related to the data collection. But also, I know we continue to talk about that coresponder model. And I too assure you that depending on what comes out of the legislator, we all understand that this is really important, and that we want to make sure that this is a tool that our officers in our city has available to them. And I know that we will all work through that biennial budget process to make sure that we have funding for this if it's not brought forth by the state. So just looking again at my tallies, we've got the two proposals in front of us. Making sure that we have a consensus to move forward. I have more than enough consensus to move forward than with Councilmember Voice's proposal number five, which is using 50,000 out of the fund balance to hire consultants. And then again, we will all make sure that we are paying attention to what happens in the legislator moving through our biannual budget process next year. So if there are no questions or comments on this, I think we have enough information to move forward with that proposal. Any other comments? All right, wonderful conversation on this piece. And Paula, I think we're ready to move forward on any other proposals that we have.
All right, so let's go ahead and go to our next slide, please. And so this is funding a coresponder program. There were actually three different alternatives that, that came forward. One from Councilmember Core, again, asking to use the cars per officer program dollars to be able to fund the coresponder program. Councilmember Voice has recommended the use of $100,000 from the newly enacted 1/10th of 1% sales tax for affordable housing and mental health to research and develop mental health coresponder program in concert with other interested South King County cities, and to make recommendations to city council in early 2021. And then Councilmember Lommer has a proposal that came forth to be able to use a portion of the capital dollars that was budgeted for the multimedia asset management system for the $100,000, the Sprout system, and the CMS to be able to use those dollars, capital dollars, to be able to fund the coresponder program.
All right, just like we did with our previous proposals, I'm going to go ahead and let councilmembers each have some time to speak on their proposal or request. Councilmember Core, did you have anything you wanted to add to your proposal?
No, basically what I said before, that, you know, we need to consider that, so. I don't, that's, yeah.
All right, thank you very much. Councilmember Voice, do you want to speak on your proposal?
Yeah, and I would say Councilmember Lommer and I, we did have some conversation earlier, trying to figure out what's the best way to approach this year. So I will talk about mine and Councilmember Lommer, you can add in some of the things that we talked about, the ballot this year, and talk about the 380. But at the end of the day, I think we all strongly believe that, that the coresponder and the mental health is critical, right? And we have to get on that right away. And my proposal is to the 100K from the 1/10th of 1% sales tax for the housing, we use that right away from the House bill, 1590. And then going forward, 40%, 40% of that could also be used towards the mental and behavioral help treatment program and service and so on. So I feel pretty strong about this year. Council Lommer and I, we had some conversation about this, so I think we had some compromise on this here. So that's where I'm at. I guess Councilmember Lommer, you want to go and then some of the you and I talked about?
Yeah, absolutely. I mean, the idea that we could use the, this new funding source for exactly what it's intended is that is the mental health and supports for those type of responses. And so the fact that we have that available, I think it's a great use of that funding. And then additionally, we know that we can use 40% of that ongoing income towards these programs as well. In my proposal, I was looking towards, you know, knowing that there is, there are some expenses I had questions about, and I was interested in cutting, but knowing that those funds were restricted to capital. My idea would be that if we don't move forward with MAM and with the multimedia asset management tool and Sprout, that we would divert that funding towards capital related to the mental health responder model, knowing that it is tied up and restricted to capital. So that was my, I guess, my proposal as well.
I think for clarity, Councilmember Lommer, I think when we get to talk about the multimedia system, then also Sprout, then we will make the adjustment. I think 200,000, that also, that was for the IT, which I think you.
Right, yes, actually, yeah. So there, there was 200,000 in the IT that I had asked be removed from the budget. However, actually, after walking the, walking the facility that is part of the training room remodel with Councilmember Fincher yesterday, and then I think Councilmember Voice, you walked it right after us. It quickly became clear that this was not about an IT training room. It was about a much-needed remodel for the health and, let's just say, for the health and safety of our IT staff that is sitting in a building that is very much in need of improvement.
Councilmember Lommer, I want you to know, soon I got home yesterday, I took a shower right away, okay?
Yeah, I, I had to leave that building. I was getting a massive headache from the smell of the mold.
Same, and you, Councilmember Fincher, as well.
Yeah, this, it, it, being onsite, and, you know, it's one thing to look at the schematic of a training room remodel that didn't seem necessary on paper, but then to actually walk into that building and realize what was the full scope of this request. And I, I know I told our IT director, I'm like, this isn't about a training room. This is about the safety of our employees. So, yeah, so I rescind, I took that off my list. I absolutely want to spend $200,000 to make their workplace a little healthier.
Thank you, Councilmember Lommer. It looks like you did your homework, so thank you very much. So we've got the three proposals. Councilmember Lommer, you also have the, so you're asking, are you just looking at Councilmember Voice's proposal at this point? Or did you have anything within your proposal you wanted to talk about?
I'm looking, looking at Councilmember Voice's at this point. I think we're hoping to talk about the social media in another slide, or are we discussing that now?
I propose it to be, we discuss it later, Madam Chair.
Okay, so Councilmember Michelle, do you have a comment or question?
I have a question. When will those funds from the sales tax be available to us to use?
Those funds are effective January 1, 2021. But as a reminder, when we collect sales tax, there is a two-month lag before those funds are available to the city, so that will be in March of 2021.
I have a question, Paula and Derek and the mayor. So we need that fund right away, to get something going right away. Is it possible to do an intertransfer fund from the reserve? And then once we get that money, put it back? I'm assuming if we want to get something going right away, that's a possibility?
Yes, that is a possibility to do that.
So my thought would be, all depending where we have, we have to put something in place. I guess to my fellow councilmember, if we are ready to go with this process in January or February, I don't want to wait until the sale tax. I would propose that we borrow from the, the intertransfer fund from the reserve. And then once we get the sales tax, then we can put the money back. Now, I want to make sure that my councilmember will be okay with that.
I think it's a great suggestion. I'm going to circle back around in a minute to talk about where everyone stands with these proposals, but I want to get through hands raised really quickly. Councilmember Michelle, you still have your hand up, did that answer your question? Okay, anybody else have any questions or comments about these three proposals? Okay, so, and then again, looking at Councilmember Voice's proposal, knowing that we have the ability to access those funds or borrow those funds earlier so that we can get started on, on this piece before that March date, when we actually start seeing the money comes and makes perfect sense. Just to get a consensus, I've heard, obviously, Councilmember Voice and Lommer, I just want to know where we are with a consensus for the rest of my colleagues on these proposals. Councilmember Thomas.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So I'm okay with Councilmember Voice's proposal, but I really dislike and don't want it to be habit-forming to go into reserve and with a payback idea. There's just, sometimes I lived through eight and nine, 2008 and nine, and we were doing stuff like that, and it becomes very hard to pay it back. And I, I just want us to be all aware of what we're doing.
I guess my comment to that, Councilmember Thomas, I just want to have the flexibility. I'm not sure we'll have stuff in place that quick.
I understand.
But I, I understand, I understand where you're coming from, what happened in the past. So this is a new council, we're a lot smarter, so that won't happen this time.
I appreciate your comment, though. I'm going to turn to Derek Matheson. Derek, do you want to comment on this?
Yeah, I just want to reassure everybody that what Councilmember Voice is proposing is literally what we do every day. The reason, one of the reasons we have a fund balance is because different revenues come in at different times of the year. For example, property tax is our biggest revenue. That comes in once in the spring, once in the fall. So what the council member has proposed is not unusual, and what, it's what we do every day.
Thank you so much for that clarity. Councilmember Michelle.
Thank you. Yes, I support Councilmember Voice's proposal and agree with him that we are much smarter now, so we should be all good.
That's because of you, Xander, because you own the council, okay?
Thank you, Councilmember Michelle. Councilmember Fincher.
So I just let you know that I also support Councilmember Voice's proposal.
Thank you, Councilmember Fincher. Councilmember Core.
Thank you. I had this conversation with Councilmember Voice before, so I do support his proposal. I think it's, it's a compromise on everyone's part, so I appreciate him bringing this up. Thank you.
Thank you, great comments, and I agree, it is a compromise. And I really appreciate these conversations that we're having and hearing everybody's point of view and being able to work together to get through some funding issues and find solutions that I feel are going to work best for the city and everyone. So with that said, it looks like we have consensus to move forward with proposal number six. So Paula, we can move on.
All right, before we leave this page, there was question number 80 that did come up, that really came under this coresponder program, or how do we fund that? And the question was, could we use the red light cameras to be able to fund that, being that this is public safety related? Technically, the answer to that would be yes. One of the things to be mindful of, that the red light cameras do fund what it costs to be able to run the red light camera program. So there are fees that are associated with that. In addition, it also funds our body worn camera program, another valuable program that we have. With both of those, there are some additional support that was needed in order to, for, for personnel to be able to do that. So there are some salary, salaries and benefits that are associated with that. In addition, some of that money is used for indigent counsel. And so I just, I, I say, yes, those dollars could technically be used, but we want to be mindful that we're still able to use that revenue to, to be able to cover the cost of the program. All right, and if there's no questions on that, then I can move on. But if there are, I'm happy to take them.
I think, I'm not seeing any hands raised.
All right, thank you. Okay, so proposal number 11 was the Human Services Opportunity Fund. And it is, we need to make a commitment to innovation in human services equal to innovation in economic development. Therefore, please increase the Human Services Opportunity Fund to 300,000. This additional funding should be covered by the one-time general fund give-back by parks. I wanted to take just a moment to clarify what, what, what is meant by give-back by parks? And I am assuming that this is meaning Parks is anticipating underspending their budget this year. And so that, those dollars where, where we don't spend everything we have budgeted typically rolls into fund balance. And so ultimately, when we are making a choice to use those so-called give-backs, we're ultimately deciding to use our fund balance in the general fund. So that is just something to be mindful of. Wanted to throw that out there, and then I'll turn that back over to you, Council President Trautner, to have a discussion.
All right, thank you, Paula. I don't, I'm not sure whose proposal this was, if, who would like to speak on this, that would be great.
That was mine, actually. And I think it's just, we're setting up these opportunity or innovation funds, and we, we want to fund the economic development one to the tune of 300,000, and yet for human services, we're only funding that opportunity fund to 100,000. So it just, it felt a little skewed to me. And knowing that we, that Parks is under, underfunding or underspent this year because of COVID, we have the money. And this kind of goes to my earlier point of like the feedback I'm getting around, you know, our homeless response, especially in our downtown core, you know, that it's just not working at, as far as the, you know, the business of residents' point of view. So maybe it's time to try something new, and I want to make sure that there is funding to try those new things in the human services fund. So that was my proposal.
Thank you, Councilmember Lommer. Councilmember Michelle, you have your hand raised?
Yes, thank you. I have a question, well, I have two questions for Paula. Paula, did other departments' unspent money, is that already accounted for in the budget? In the proposed budget?
No, so typically, unspent Monday, money just goes into fund balance and rolls over into the next year. And then that becomes part of our fund balance. And so when we go through the budget cycle, we can look at, do we want to spend down any of that fund balance? Or do we want to leave it in fund balance and use it later? Most often, when you do see dollars in the general fund or in any fund that rolls from one fiscal year to the next fiscal year, we call those carryforwards. So for an example of when this is typically done and used, has to do with, for example, the fleet department purchases a vehicle. The vehicle is purchased in 2020, but because it takes so long to get them in, it doesn't come until 2021, which means that budget needed to roll over to be able to cover the cost of that. So usually, there's a contractual arrangement to be able to do this. But this would really strictly, wouldn't be necessarily a rollover, it would be the use of fund balance.
Okay, so Paula, this 700,000 from Parks is in the fund balance?
Currently, it's budgeted for 2020, but if they do not spend it, it would roll to fund balance, yes.
All right, Councilmember Voice.
So just, how, how much? So just, how, how much do we, I'm sorry, allocated towards the human service? Do we know how much, how do we allocate it, Paula? We allocate some for ECDC and we allocate, was 130, 150?
It was $100,000 in 2022 that was allocated for human services. And it is for a pilot program that I'm sure that Julie could speak some more about if you wanted to understand the intent of what that $100,000 was going to be for.
That was my next question is to put Julie on the spot. Because if it's a pilot program, I'm, I think, if, if the hundred grand would cover the pilot, then we should work through the pilot before adding any more money to the bucket. But maybe Julie can help me better understand this, please. Julie?
Hey, this is Marina. Oh, sorry.
I was actually just going to pass it to the expert Marina, so go ahead, Marina.
Yeah, I'm happy to talk a little bit more about this. The idea behind the $100,000 opportunity fund was really to acknowledge the fact that with our traditional human services funding process. So for example, this year in 2020, we went through a funding cycle. And so those funds are now allocated through 2022. So what happens then is, you know, things come up in the interim that are either emerging needs or innovative new programs or expansions, grassroots organizations that have really great programs. And there's just no ability for us to find a way to support them. So additionally, the way that our process is set up, I mean, I think you all know, we participate in the funding process kind of in cohesion and cooperation with the other suburban cities in King County. So it tends to favor more mainstream organizations that have grant writers and, and kind of the traditional model of programming and reporting and things like that. So there's not a lot of ability for us to be flexible with those dollars and to be able to support more of those grassroots, community-based programs that tend to kind of percolate, percolate up from the community. So this was really something that we identified as something that we would like to see as part of our budget during our strategic planning process. So I actually, I think we talked about it a couple of times at workshop over the past year. And I think that's why the mayor included it in her budget proposal, just to allow us that extra level of flexibility to be able to fund some of those more kind of community-based programs that do tend to be more centered in our BIPOC community in Kent.
Madam, well, Marina, please. So how do you, how, how do you choose 100,000 versus 10,000 versus 50,000? I'm assuming there have been some historical data that maybe it happened in the last three years to kind of give you this here. Just can you help me with that, please, Marina?
We actually, when we proposed the fund, we kind of considered it in terms of a staff position. We kind of looked at it that way, knowing it's a pilot program and knowing that it is a tough budget year and there's a lot of competition for great programs in the city and trying to be mindful of that as well. So we didn't, we didn't go over the top. We did request, you know, kind of looking at both options, staffing or the opportunity fund. And we also considered asking for an increase in the 1%, but the reality is, we knew that that funding would kind of just end up being diluted across programs that we tend to already support. So that was why we kind of honed in on this. The funding was a little bit arbitrary in terms of the level that we wanted to seek, but we also thought that if we were able to offer it as a pilot and show some really great results, that hopefully it would continue to be supported going forward.
I really appreciate that, Marina. I mean, you are the second man at expert, right? And I think the fact that it's a pilot, right? So when you do pilot, you're really doing things just as trying to seek and find things out. So I, I guess I will support the 100K and leave it like it is. And let's see, I mean, I don't want to throw anything into buying a budget, but you know, if it get crazy, then we can look at it. But I mean, you ask for 100 grand and for the pilot, then I will be willing to support that. So that's where I'm at.
Thank you, Councilmember Voice. Councilmember Michelle.
Thank you. So I know that we are struggling with capacity and giving this money out. So I would also say, let's leave it at what it is right now and see how it works out.
Thank you, Councilmember Michelle. Councilmember Larmour.
Yeah, I just wanted, you know, to reiterate, you know, 100,000 doesn't go far. I mean, that can be two grand, you know, two grand or twice two programs, you know, innovative programs that want to be stood up. So that's my concern is that it's, it just doesn't seem sufficient to me, even perhaps for a pilot.
Madam Chair, I'm sorry. Could we possibly have maybe after the first quarter, have Marina and team maybe come and present to the council on where we at with this opportunity fund?
I think that's a great suggestion. And I'm sure Marina, is that something that you don't mind sharing with us?
Definitely.
All right. Great idea. Councilmember Cor.
Thank you. I, I'd have to, I, I'd have to agree with Councilmember Larmour on that 100,000 is not a lot. It doesn't go far. So my question to you is Marina, are you thinking maybe these are like micro grants? And you're not considering bringing in another person to work on this?
We don't have the ability right now to increase our staffing level. And so that's honestly one of my ongoing concerns with taking a lot of new funds in. My staff is, you know, working, you know, they're pretty maxed out right now. And if I think through the fact that we have also layered on another round of funding with the CDBG CV funds that we haven't even been able to really tackle that yet. You know, it is adding on an entire another process. So thinking that through and trying to, it's, it's a tricky line to, to walk because of course I want more funds to invest in the community. That would be, you know, of course, that's something that we, we want to be able to do. But I also want to be mindful of both the capacity of my staff to manage that and then, you know, the capacity of the organizations in the city. And one of the other, I mean, we did kind of model this, this fund after a couple of other things. So in the past, we have funded neighbor to neighbor through the Seattle Foundation to support some of these very similar programs that we're thinking about being able to provide funding to. And then also, we had our parallel application process that was also geared towards small grassroots organizations that had smaller budgets and hadn't received grants from the city before. And so those amounts do tend to be a little bit smaller. So when, you know, when Councilmember Larmour talks about our ability to stand up new programs, you're right, it will be really difficult to do that with this fund. So I kind of tend to think of this more as kind of providing, providing support. Maybe it's not an ongoing program per se. Maybe it's kind of the tabletop things, you know, a little more creative and innovative than an actual ongoing program that's going to, you know, report back to us outcomes year after year. So a little bit different than what we typically fund. So, you know, we're doing our best and winging it a little bit. But so that's, yeah, it's, it's a tricky, tricky one to answer.
Thank you, Marina. I think it's a great idea. I think it's definitely, you know, our communities, I've heard from some, some organizations in our community, there are small organizations that they haven't been funded through certain cycles for several grants. So I think it would definitely help our small nonprofits in our community. So I'd be happy to support it at 100,000. I'd be happy to support it at more if that's needed. And you think you're, you and your staff can, can handle that. But I'm okay with, you know, supporting it either way. Because I think it's needed and I think we just try it. And we won't know until we try it to see what the need is in our community. So I'm comfortable either way on this one. And leaving it to the expert Marina on, on this.
Thank you, Councilmember Cor. As, as you're speaking, I'm seeing lots of my colleagues shaking their heads and support as you're stating that as well. Councilmember Michelle, did you have any additional questions or comments?
Yes, I have a question for Paula, thinking about where this money would come from. Paula, do you have a general forecast of what overspending might be for this year? So what would be extra in the general fund?
We have some projections. I know that Parks has actually been looking at their projections. And Julie, I'm sorry, I'm going to speak to you. I believe the last number, when Julie and I spoke, just specifically on the Parks Department, is about 800,000 where they would be underspending this year, strictly related to parks. General fund, just typically on a normal year, general fund is often underspent by probably 2%, 1% to 2%. So there's of our total budget. So there's usually some level of underspending that does happen within the general fund.
So Paula, it sounds like this money is there if we wanted to use it?
There is money in fund balance, yes. This would be part of the, if you look at the general fund fund balance, we have actually built that fund balance up over the years to help us to, to navigate that structural imbalance that we face typically every year of about $2 million. So, so, yeah, so we have allowed for enough capacity in, in that fund balance to cover that.
Councilmember Fincher.
Thank you, Madam President. I wanted to say that I would also support this at the $100,000 level and coming back simply because I know that Marina does have a very small staff who is handling all of the granting and funding that goes through her department, along with the numerous other responsibilities they have. So I do have a concern about capacity. But I do want to also say that I think it's a great idea that this goes to the different organizations in Kent that have not received funding before. I know a number of organizations out there that are doing good work. And, you know, that they've been, some have been out there a while, some are on the newer end, only a couple of years old, but that they could definitely use, use the help and support. But that we have to have the staffing to be able to get through the applications and get everything organized. And Marina, I would support also still, though, getting the reports back from them. I don't know, in listening to what you said, it sounded like possibly they would not be giving reports back with their outcomes. But I would say that they, I would hope that there would still be reporting back from the organization so we can see what the outcomes are and what the dollars are doing. And who they're doing them with. Thank you.
Yeah, the, some of the reporting might look a little bit different if we're doing some different type of programming. So if it's more not event, I don't want to say events, that's the wrong thing to think, think about. But if they're more community, like community engagement events and things like that, it might not be the traditional service report, but we would still definitely get reporting back and monitor outcomes.
Thank you.
Thank you. I was also thinking, there's some out there, there's a number of them that are doing, that are helping not only students, but the students and their families. And that again, goes to helping keep people, thinking about that school to prison pipeline. It helps keep people out of the justice system if we can hit them up on the first, on the front end and help them there. And it also saves quite a bit of dollars over keeping somebody in prison or having to go through the justice system. Thank you.
Julie, did you want to comment in on this?
I did. Thanks, you, Council President. I did just want to maybe throw out a different option there for consideration is this is a program that we were looking at launching in '22. And so the budget process for 2022 starts around, you know, I don't know, June, July. We probably have about maybe six months under our belt of understanding how this is working in the community, because you could also address it that, that exact year and then address it for the '23, '24 budget. One of my primary concerns in this area, especially this type of funding, is consistency and reliability of the funding. So it'd be great if we launch it this first year and it's really great. But if we can't sustain it for the long term, then we yank it away from the community and some of these groups who have built this synergy. So I have a little bit of concern there. And since we can't really lock, how, how, how long can we support the program? It might be better to test it out and see how it works and then adjust it more conservatively going forward for the '23, '24. So that's just a thought to maybe consider as well.
Thank you so much, Julie. Councilmember Voice.
Yeah, I just want to say, it sounded like, oh, what? Oh, sorry. It sounded like we have a, we heard from both, both expert, so they want to leave it at 100K. And I hear quite a few of my councilmembers seem to be okay with that. I just think we might want to, we should be on the same page and might want to move on, I guess.
Okay, I think Councilmember Thomas was trying to chime in. I saw that his mic was off. I will unmute you, Councilmember Thomas. Did you want to make a comment?
There we go. Thank you, Council President. Am I on now?
You are.
Okay, thank you, Council President. I think enough has probably been said about this by my colleagues, but there's an old saying that the, every great journey begins with the first step. So let's take this first step next year with 100,000, see how it goes, evaluate it at that time and go on, move, make a decision at that time.
Thank you, Councilmember Thomas. So again, looking at my tallies here, I've got proposal number 11. I've kind of got some no's and some yeses. It looks like there is a majority of the council that would like to leave it at the 100,000, but then also have Marina report back to us to let us know how that's going. And maybe we can have a discussion again during the budget adjustments. So with that, it looks like Paula, we've got a majority for keeping it as is. And I think we can move on. I know that we're kind of running out of time here. I want to be able to make sure we can get through these and then we'll have time to take a quick break in between meetings. So let's go ahead and move on.
All right. Next slide, please, Michelle. And I believe that this is the actual last slide that I have, unless you guys have additional things you wish to speak about. Proposal number 12 has to do with youth programming and outreach. And it was Councilmember Larmour who brought this forward and said that, please use remaining unallocated Parks give back to fund expansion of youth programming and outreach in Kent, including evaluation of these programs for equity, audience reach, and opportunities to improve outcomes. Several of us has expressed concerns about whether our youth programs are reaching the kids at most risk and in most need of support. I support the Parks gift back being used to fund the limited term position in the Human Services Department, specific to youth programs, to execute the recommendations of the recent Park Consultant recommendations and to work with the Equity Manager to assess and re, reimagine any youth and teen programs that are reaching our most underserved communities. And I will turn this over to you, Council President.
Thank you, Paula. Councilmember Larmour, would you like to speak on this?
Yeah, so this was just, you know, pretty much, I can be pretty wordy as I'm looking at this. But yeah, it's just the idea of, you know, we have done a lot of work with consultants in the past. And I think Julie can, Julie sent on a very comprehensive email about everything we're doing. But it sounds like, you know, there's some recommendations and stuff that we want to act on. And I'm concerned about, you know, having the bandwidth to, to get some of this work done, make some of these recommendations. So knowing that we had a significant give back this year, I was suggesting that we use that to fund a limited term position for youth programming, youth expense. So it's just, that was at the heart of this because, you know, it's, it would be a limited position just to get us through the hump of the evaluation of the programs and where we can be most impactful on the recommendations that we, we have already.
All right. Thank you, Councilmember Larmour. Councilmember Voice, do you have a question or comment?
Both. I think- Both. I think this item number 12, and I think item 7, 8, and 9, are we going to talk about those? Because that may have an impact on item number 12 that Councilmember Larmour was talking about. So we didn't talk about items 7, 8, and 9. And I'm thinking those could have an impact on item number 12.
We actually rolled 7, 8, and 9 in with 10 when we had it up on the slide, so I do apologize for that. But you guys are welcome to include those. I don't know if everyone has those in front of them.
But I think item number 7, we, I think we're okay, Councilmember Larmour, with the 200 grand for the IT room.
Yeah, I rescinded my request, yeah. So leaving, yeah, leaving 200,000 in the budget for the IT remodel.
Yeah, but item number 8 and number 9, which is the communication thing, we need to talk about those, I think.
Yeah.
The multimedia management asset manager?
Yeah, but that could have an impact on item number 12. I would propose that we discuss 8 and 9 first, if that's okay with Councilmember Larmour.
So let's go back to proposal number 12, though, really quick, because that, like you said, that might help tie us into that. So did you have a, you're talking about the Give Back Fund. So in your other proposal for 8 and 9, you talk about using the funds from the social media to pay for, I believe it was that proposal number 6. So we kind of addressed that. Did you want to remove that then from this proposal, or was that something you wanted to carry into something else?
So bottom line for me is I still have concerns and issues about Sprout and the multimedia management tool. And so, you know, knowing that that was capital and that's tied, has to be tied to capital, I would again, you know, propose that we use that to fund a one-time youth expense at a later date. Again, I'm just concerned about being able to actually take action and support, you know, the youth recommendations that we have. There's a long laundry list of things that have come out of some of the consultant work. And I want to make sure that we either have, you know, we're either funding a position to support that programming and/or we are setting aside, you know, funding for, you know, my understanding is we can set aside capital for a one-time expense. And so it'd be a one-time pool of money for youth programming in the future.
Okay. So kind of separating that out of this proposal here, out of 10, because we were kind of comparing these three together. We voted on moving forward with 6, but that doesn't address...
Social media tools, right?
Okay.
Or using a Parks Give Back.
Yes, for item number 8, as well as number 9. So I think both those totaled about $180,000. One is for the MAM, and the other is for Sprout, which is 130,000. And then 50,000 would be for the website. And I did talk to Councilmember Larmour about this earlier, for my proposal, you know, and for us to discuss, is that I, you know, ever since I came on this council, one thing that we had never done a good job of, we got much better, is reaching out to our community. And that is for telling our story. And for the most part, we rely on, early on, the Kent reporter to tell our story. And that wasn't always the best story, or the story that we liked to tell, right? And then I think over the past, you know, two to three years, I think our communication have grown quantumly as far as reaching out to the community. I am somewhat familiar with Sprout, and maybe not as familiar as Councilmember Larmour, we talked a little bit earlier today. But, and also with the MAM system. I would propose that we move forward with the MAM and Sprout system, because I strongly believe in communicating to our citizen. I strongly believe that. And as far as the Councilmember Larmour was talking about allocating fund to the SI for youth, I think House Bill 1590, as I read through it, it also could allow us to put 130,000 to the SI for the youth. And I think that would answer some of Councilmember Larmour's concern, making sure we have that funding there. But I'd be willing to talk to all of my councilmember. I just, when it comes to communicating to our citizen, we got to do it seven times in seven different ways. And I support both of the Sprout. I think it would help us increase our communication. And then I think the MAM system would be a plus as well, too. So that is what I will put on the table.
Thank you, Councilmember Boyce. I wrote some of those things down, and I will kind of keep track here. Councilmember Fincher, do you have a question or a comment?
I have a comment. Thank you. So I would like to also support MAM being in the budget. I would be okay with removing Sprout for now and moving that up to a later budget period. But with MAM, I think that's going to, that will help us with the communication as far as the Parks Department, which sends out a lot of mailing to our residents and to the residents in the city. And I think it's important for both, not only the efficiency, but the reach that MAM, you know, we heard Julie over the weekend, and then I talked to her again, as well as talking to Councilmember Boyce both today. And so I think we definitely need to keep MAM in, in the budget.
Okay, I'm just kind of looking through my notes really quick, and I'm just wondering, do we have, I think we have someone, Patty, are you willing to speak just really quickly on, just so that we're clear, the difference between those two, MAM and Sprout? Because that was my understanding that Sprout is actually used by all the departments.
They actually, hi.
Yeah, and I know they're different. I understood that part.
Okay.
But I'm just saying that, you know, some...
So what specifically would you like to know?
Well, I'm just wondering, when I'm looking at this, just some clarification, Councilmember Fincher.
Oh, sure.
On why you feel that one versus the other, just so that I'm making sure I get your right comments on here.
Or both. Madam President, we're talking about both, not one versus the other, I don't think.
Yeah. The other, so.
Yeah, so they're really very...
And I said, and not that, not that they do the same exact thing. I know that they're not, you know, apples to apples, that they serve two different purposes. But after talking to Julie today, and just thinking about the number of people that she would reach and serve, I think that MAM could be in now, and we could hold off a while on Sprout, you know. And, you know, I've been one of the people who's been saying that we have to communicate better to the city and the translation services and all. I do believe that we need to be looking at translation and other ways of reaching our people in multiple different ways, because not everyone is going to get the information from the same way. You know, some are going to only look at their phone, while others are going to be on the computer, and some are only going to read a piece of paper. But listening to how much MAM would simplify the job that they're doing over in Parks, realizing how hard Parks has been hit in the past, you know, I just think that that's where I want to put that, those dollars. And that Councilmember Boyce is going to help get that additional $136,000 for the youth.
Right, okay. So the MAM would organize all of the assets, and it's multimedia, it's not just photos. It would be video, it would be audio, it would be photos. And yes, it would be so beneficial to Parks, one of the many, one of the places that we serve. So it organizes all of our information so we can really specifically categorize it for the customer. So like Parks would look at all of Parks' information, all of their very specific photos, all of their very specific videos, just for Parks. And then with Sprout, that helps us communicate and reach all of our different platforms that we need on social. It also gives us all of our data that we need, and it holds it indefinitely versus what we use now takes it away and we get rid of the information. And we cannot go back and get the reports and the data that we need.
Thank you, Patty. I think that was really helpful for me.
I have a question on that, Madam President. Could I ask it now?
Sure. I just want to kind of keep us moving forward, too, so if we can just be respectful and allow everyone some time to get their questions answered. But go ahead, Councilmember Fincher.
Thank you. So are you saying that without that, we would not be able to collect and hold on to the data? We wouldn't be able to parse it out?
Correct. The analytics only go back a certain amount of time, three months. And with Sprout, it's indefinitely.
Thank you.
Yes. And so that'll just really be able to help us communicate better and measure who we're talking to and get our messaging out very, to very specifically or very broadly. It's just a fabulous tool.
Thank you, Patty. Julie, before I move on to questions, did you have something you wanted to add?
I did. Thank you, Council President. A couple scenarios. One, I just want everybody to know, I 100% support purchasing the MAM and the Sprout software. We completed our marketing and engagement plan in 2019. And the top three platforms that were recommended to use were social media, our website, and then our marketing collateral, and direct mailing, and actually going to the people. And so the support of these functions coming up is going to be massive for us, because we can target and so on. The other benefit about MAMs for me is it's an efficiency savings for my staff team. I've got maybe 35 professionals in the Parks Department that have to work cooperatively with multimedia to get marketing collateral out and other types of pieces to the community. And you can imagine the back-and-forth time that occurs there. It would save us an immense amount of time if we actually could just search, tell the team exactly what we're thinking and visioning for the program, and have it sent that way. So it would definitely save a ton of time there. And then Sprout, obviously, social media is, it's a tool that we use. It's not our primary, because we want to reach the broader Kent as well. But it's probably one of the primary ones that we are using, too, to reach youth as well. And so it's an excellent tool. I just want to support, throw my name in there if that helps, that I really, we really need it desperately. The other issue that I wanted to talk about really quick and then pass it back to you guys was Councilmember Larmour's question about youth development. I really believe we have already done some of this work in regards to who we're serving, what we're serving, and not just our recreation program plan, but also our Youth Call to Action Plan that we've spent a ton of time on. So I'm a little concerned again in regards to sustainability. It doesn't help to just give a transfer of a dollar amount one time, simply because it takes people to actually program classes. So one programmer is around 120,000 annually with benefits. And they deliver maybe 200 to 300 programs to the community. And so if we get funding sources in but no staff capacity, I just don't have the ability to deliver programs unless it comes with programming support and so on. And so I just want to make sure that that's considered when you're all talking, because there really wasn't a dollar amount here, as well as how long it could be sustained into the future. Definitely support it. I mean, I could take millions for all the kids in the city. It's just about a balance on what's that right amount, and are we doing it in the right ways? We are definitely taking major strides to advance this area. So I feel like we're okay here, but happy to continue to have the dialogue with you all.
Thank you, Julie. So just to, for the purpose of time and to see where all of my colleagues are, we had the proposal from Councilmember Larmour to take that money that would be used for MAM and Sprout and put that towards a one-time youth program. And then, but Councilmember Boyce proposed the opportunity to take some of the funds coming from House Bill 1590 to be able to use some funds for that, what Councilmember Larmour is looking at doing and keeping MAM in there. So those are the two proposals that I believe I'm kind of looking at, unless I'm missing something. So when you give your comments or your questions, if you could just let me know where you stand on either one of the proposals, that would be great. And I will start with Councilmember Cor.
Thank you. I'd have to say, it's a want and not a need. I understand that. I would be okay supporting MAM and Sprout, but I think we need to look at that in biennium, not now. I wouldn't be okay supporting it right now. The reasoning is, we are okay with waiting for data analysis until biennium and other urgent things that we need for our community. Okay to wait until biennium. I think we should be able to wait for this as well. And the other thing is, I support Councilmember Larmour on her proposal. Because I think we can do without Sprout for now, and maybe consider it at the biennium. I know it's only 30,000, but it's, you know, we can use it somewhere else where it's much needed. So I'd support her proposal on this one. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Cor. Councilmember Larmour, did you have an additional question or comment?
Actually, I did have a question for Patty, if she's still available. So, yeah, I'm here. Okay, good. So Patty, you know, part of looking at this, and unfortunately, like, this is sort of, this is my line of work. So I'm probably a little closer to this than I should be. But when I think about a MAM system, you know, there is a lot of complexity, and it's going to be a huge migration process. I wonder, you know, have we looked at something like just a Dropbox Pro? You know, expanding access and organizing for folder structures and a shared drive, it just...
Sure.
My hesitation, it feels like there's a lot of other ways to accomplish what we need than a full MAM implementation.
So if we use something like a OneDrive, a Google Drive, or a Dropbox, I basically just have asset library, asset sharing, and a search function. So if I go with a MAM, I'm able to support a lot more functionality with, say, video, audio, photo, plus the amount of terabytes that I would need to put on there. Our stuff is so huge. I mean, I can't just throw it on a Dropbox. Also, one big, huge thing, security. The MAM will keep us secure. I'll be able to share throughout the other departments in secure, very curated pieces that they can use. And so the security issue through IT is something, the curation is another thing, the management of who has access. So I could use this internally to all of our departments. But I can also use it with the vendor and give them very specific access, like you would for other clouded functionality.
Thank you. Councilmember Boyce, you have one minute.
42nd. So I just want to reiterate, I mean, you listened to Patty, I mean, I'm convinced even more so. And I just want to clear my proposal out once again, is that if we move forward with the Sprout and MAM system, the 130K, I would suggest that we will move it in the Parks, or we can move it into Human Service on Marina Hansen. I think, you know, some will come up, and there will be a need for that. And, you know, Julie, between the Parks or Marina, I would like to allocate that 130 in one of those. And things will come up. And strongly support the Sprout and the MAM system. So that's the proposal I have on the table, and you can...
So you're saying, keep those in there, but then you're also saying spend 130?
Additional 130 will come out of House Bill 1590.
Oh, gotcha, perfect.
Support Councilmember Larmour. Yes, and we can put it into Parks or into Human Service.
Okay. Councilmember Thomas.
Thank you. It's been a long time. So, thank you, Council President. It's been 45 minutes, and we've gone full circle here, back to proposal 6, in which all of us were willing to give up removal of MAM and Sprout, et cetera. But after listening, after hashing it out with the other councilmembers listening, I think I would go with Councilmember Larmour on this one, and just do the MAM, because that's temporary. Sprout, we could always get back, but MAM, you can't get back.
Did you hear what she just said? For the analytic piece is on the tail end of it, almost kind of go hand in hand, so...
I got lost after whatever that paradoxal was, or whatever.
Yeah, and to be clear, I think my proposal was neither. I think it was Councilmember Fincher that proposed one.
Yep, I think we're looking at them hand in hand. Councilmember Thomas, so either you agree to have both, or we don't have either.
MAM.
So where are you on this, if we kept them together?
Well, I guess I would be okay. I'd like to see the end result. I'd like to see the end result, but yeah, okay.
Councilmember Michonne, I haven't heard from you yet, would you like to give your thoughts?
After hearing from staff, it's clear that the media management is super important. I don't fully understand why we can't use a OneDrive, but whatever, I, I have to trust staff. And I feel like Councilmember Voice's idea is a good compromise, so I'm going to go with that.
Thank you, Councilmember Michonne. I feel like I would like to weigh in a little bit on this as well, and say that I am in support of this. I do appreciate Councilmember Cor's thoughts and Councilmember Lormer, but just as a reminder, you know, we're, we're dealing with a really difficult time right now, and the ability to reach our community is very important, and there's multiple ways to do that. And it's, if you go back and you look at some of the data that's been collected so far, since even going back just to July, the increase in engagements, reactions, comments, messages has just skyrocketed because of our ability to communicate, communicate with our public through the social media means. So I think that putting this aside and waiting till the biennium adjustment next year, to me, just doesn't seem like it's a very effective tool to set aside at this point. So I would be in support of keeping this, and going with Councilmember Voice's suggestion. Councilmember Cor, I'd like to give you one more chance to comment, followed by Councilmember Fincher.
Yeah, thank you. Quick question. So the funding we're getting out of, is that from the Affordable Housing Sales Tax we just recently passed, Councilmember Voice? Is that what you're proposing?
The House Bill 15, they didn't allow us to do that, Councilmember Cor, that is correct, yes.
Okay, so how, so that bill, that sales tax is passed for affordable housing? So proposal for that, just moving it to, just moving it to human services or parks is, sorry, is not the right, I feel like we're, we're using that sales tax for everything we don't want to fund out of our own pockets. So I don't agree with that. And we are doing fine with social media right now, we have more than enough people in Communications Department for this purpose. So I feel like we can wait on Sprout until biennium, because if we feel that this is very important for our community, so is data analytics, that we're waiting, planning to wait on. So I feel like social media platform, I feel like Sprout is not as urgent and important need at this moment. I would be willing to support MAM, because I understand that, I, I understand that, you know, our, our multimedia does need that, so that's something different. But I feel like we need to, we're in difficult times right now in COVID, and putting our wants in front of the community when we're telling that we're struggling out of capital projects, really need to think about where we're spending our money. Really need to consider how we're spending our money, instead of having our, having our, having our wants. So that's, that's my comments right there, and I apologize for this little one of my nails. I'll stop right there, thank you.
That's okay, I appreciate it, Councilmember Cor. I just want, make one comment, it really is a, when you look at the House Bill 1590, and I have read through it, it says that 40% of that funding is for service, right? So I'm, I've seen it fall into that category, right? So, but we talk about, you know, mental health, mental health, behavior, homeless, that all that applies to youth as well, too, right? So I, I understand what you're saying, I get it, but this is just where I'm at, so...
Thank you, Councilmember Voice. So looking through my tallies, it looks like we have a majority of the consensus to move forward, keep continuing with MAM and Sprout at this point, and then also looking at using some of that Hospital 1590 for a possible one-time project.
And it specified MAM is 130, and you might want to make sure, I haven't heard of Councilmember Fincher, so I want to make sure she's on the same page.
Councilmember Fincher, did you want to comment?
Thank you, I had my, yes, and I wanted to clarify, I, I wanted to keep MAM, but I'm still, I asked questions about Sprout, but I'm still for holding Sprout to the biennium budget adjustment. So I am for keeping MAM, so, yeah, I mean, Councilmember Cor, Councilmember Voice's suggestion was good, I just think that we can put that money someplace else. So for the, the Sprout, and I am in full agreement, the, you know, the communications going out or multimedia has just grown in leaps and bounds, I mean, not just double and triple, but, you know, it's just gone monumentally, monumentally further than it was before. You know, there's lots of positive comments coming in about it. So for those reasons, I think that where we can move that out to the next budget adjustment. And MAM, I think, needs to come in now, simply because of the efficiencies and the time that it's going to save, having to go back and forth, because this is the wrong segment or the wrong building block, in my, my terminology, that I was looking for, this is not the one, so sending that back to the person who sent it in to make, you know, to multimedia and having to start that process all over, it's timely, it's wasting time on both ends, and that time, especially when you have a small staff already, you know, talking about time being money, that, that is going to cost a lot more than it's going to, it's going, having MAM is going to save us more than it's going to cost us not having that.
I think Patty made a good reason why we need to have Sprout, right? And to me, they go hand to hand, if you listen to Patty, the expert, right? She convinced me even more so. So I think, Madam President, you can see where we at, we had eight minutes.
Madam, Madam President.
I want to be respectful, because I know our city clerk needs to get us set up for the next meeting. Right now, if I'm calculating things correctly, we at least have four in support of moving forward with Sprout and MAM, and then also the House Bill.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
I'm changing my vote to my original, remove MAM only, not Sprout. So I'm with Councilmember Carr and Fincher on this one.
Where's Councilmember Lorma add on this here?
She wants them both removed. All right, so we have Thomas that doesn't want to go forward, we have Councilmember Cor, Councilmember Fincher, and Councilmember, let's see, Lormer, so I guess right now we will not move forward with it.
With what?
We're done, we are.
If we, I just want to, again, I want to be respectful of everyone's time, so that you can take a break.
What do we end up with, Madam President, I don't know, what's the, what do we end up with, I don't know.
Well, right now I think we have wanting to move forward with MAM, but not Sprout.
Number six.
Well, no, we're, we're talking about something completely different, Councilmember Thomas.
Is, I'm wondering, okay, I think part of the confusion came from my original proposal got chopped into two different places, and that's why, like, you can see my comments is alternately, like, we didn't use the funding for this. So I'm wondering if we just need to come back to this in another workshop, get some clarity, because I think it's quite confusing, too, because MAM is the file, internal use file sharing platform, Sprout is the only one that enables communications with our residents. And so I think...
Well, it sounds like you support those, Councilmember Lormer.
A nice try.
All right, so let's go ahead.
I support a $20 month Dropbox, I have a whole asset pipeline.
All right, I think, again, just to make sure that we're being respectful of people's time, just a reminder, we have one more budget workshop to get this figured out. So I will guarantee you, I will be talking with my colleagues, I'm sure, I want to make sure that you are clear on what both these options are, so we will make sure that is communicated as well, and we will...
We'll bring this one back.
Bring this one back at the next meeting. And then again, in order to get through this with the timeline that we have put forward, I want to make sure that you are doing your homework. Any additional questions or concerns that you have, you bring those forward before our next workshop, so that at the end of our next workshop, we feel very good about everything we have in front of us, and we're be, we're able to keep within that timeline of getting this done before Thanksgiving. So I appreciate all of you for your thoughtful comments and our great conversation. I'm going to go ahead and end this right now, so that you can take a few minutes, but we will see you back here shortly, and thank you again for the conversation.